Yeah.
We I'll call a meeting to order. Would you please stand and salute the flags?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands what a nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to the meeting. Small, loud. And uh we don't have minutes.
No.
No, we don't. Um Libby has resigned, so we're gonna have to find she just doesn't have the time anymore. So I'm working for something else to take down. I'll try to get us caught up anyway. I'll do it myself. Okay, but I just didn't have.
That was my next question about. I know she was busy with, you know.
Yeah, yeah, and she's just gotten to the point where she just can't. She just feel she can't get it done timely, so she doesn't want to. Hope you know anybody. Let me know. She's going to law school. She has been.
Yes.
I didn't know that part. That's awesome. Well, good for her. Uh next is department reports and Chief Laurie is on there. I don't know if he has anything to add.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Sorry, I couldn't join you. I'm just getting back from working out of state, so trying to multitask during this meeting. Uh Fire Department remains relatively busy. Uh we've had several calls the past couple of weeks. Uh most noteworthy one was uh a structure fire in Litchfield that we responded mutually to. And on our way there, uh some of us made it to the fire, others did not. We got diverted to a vehicle crash in South Monmouth. So fortunately, we had apparatus right right in route to that location anyway, on Litchfield. So we multitask on uh two different calls uh during those incidents. Um last week, uh the Fire Department toured the Monmouth Memorial School, so uh that was a treat to walk through the school for the first time since the pandemic. And uh we got familiarized with all the different locations of exits and firefighting equipment and so forth. Um did some pre-planning, uh knock on wood, and hopefully we'll never have an incident there, but at least we'll be prepared now. Um this Saturday, uh we're gonna be doing a couple of things. We got a parade in the town of Green. It's their fun days. Uh we get invited every year to have an apparatus go down to their town and participate in their parade. That's at eight, eight in the morning. So if you see a truck going out of town, that's what that's for. Um there's also gonna be a car wash Saturday at the station. Nothing worth putting on. It's actually the French class uh for Monmouth Academy. So if you got dirty vehicles, stop by and support that group. That'd be great. Um and then Sunday is our September eleventh ceremony. It's gonna be nine o'clock right at the center station, similar to what we did last year. Um be relatively short, thinking about fifteen, twenty minutes. Um um we're gonna probably shut down the road like we did last year and um you know, just make it safer for spectators during that. And let's see, uh training for the month. Uh we got a bunch of training coming up. We got actually three Thursdays. We'll be training. Uh we'll be practicing all hand uh drills down at Lowmore Farm. Uh we'll be doing airbags and struts, and we're also gonna be doing vehicle extrication uh and vehicle fires. So great busy train schedule coming up. And then uh last thing I got is just tomorrow evening at our business meeting, uh we got a couple of youngsters looking to join our junior program. So uh currently down to three, so if these two do join, we'll be back up to five. And we have a max of ten, so um I think in the coming weeks, a few of us are gonna go into the school and try to recruit five more juniors. So just wanted to maybe put it out there in in these minutes that, you know, anybody's got anybody between the age of fourteen and eighteen that are attending Monmouth Academy. Love to have them uh come visit us on a Thursday evening and look into joining our junior program. So that's all I got. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Uh I did I did. I did have a question. Uh I did. I well, I first I wanted to tell you that I didn't put all that after our last meeting. You told us a lot of things were going on in October, and I didn't put it in my uh select board notes just because it was kind of far off. Uh and I had a lot of stuff as already.
Yeah, I'm glad you did because some of those dates have changed a little bit, so that's okay. So I'll probably uh I'll I'll update it on the next the next meeting, uh what that list of activities was, unless you're winding down.
Okay. All right. Uh I think that's all I had.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
They end up in public works. Uh I spoke to the paving contractor this morning. At this point, they're scheduled to start paving the last week of this month. Um this obviously with the way paving goes, will probably get pushed one week out. Um but at the moment, he's hoping to be here last week of September to start the paving projects. Think so be in town uh a week, week and a half, depending on weather, obviously. Um Cressy Road um gravel reconstruction is is uh eminent any any time now. The contractor will be rolling in there. They just said soon, uh so I expect that to happen very soon. Same thing with the Compton Hall parking lot um revision. Um that's the same contractor as Cressy Road. Um I would expect it to be done. Um I don't think it'd be done by the end of the month, but I think early October for sure. Um that's the updates I have on that. Um as far as their dump truck that's been on order forever, uh I found out yesterday that's now been delayed till December of this year at this point. Through no fault of anybody's other than the way this economy and supply chain is going, unfortunately. Uh with that information, I told the dealer that I needed a truck and I needed them to find me one. Um and I also told them that I was gonna start looking elsewhere for options on finding a truck somewhere on a lot or something. Um and he totally understands. He's helping me in that search. We're trying to find anything that meets our needs that will be appropriate. So I am working on that. I'll update you as I have information on it, but at this point, it's not looking good for having that truck for this year's Bob season. So disappointing at best, but uh the way the world is right now, unfortunately. Um we've done a lot of work on Norris Hill Road, preparing for the paving, widening shoulders, uh did a cross culvert that needed to be replaced. Um we're working on ditching and culvering the what we classify as the very bad sections of roads that need that need attention, trying to get stuff done before uh the freeze comes. And we're busy with that. Uh still being plagued with equipment breakdowns. It's just how the days go. Um we've had a lot of work done to the equipment. It's in better shape than it's been in a long time, but we're still being being plagued by things, so. And to that extent, the transfer station's being plagued with that as well. Um yeah, I came to the realization earlier this week that since I've started the town, we've never had five compactor trailers all running at the same time. There's always been at least one broken down and out of service. And uh that remains true this week and will continue to remain true. So um you know, we're fighting the battle, parts supplies, short staff mechanics, scheduling uh and older trailers that uh just, you know, it's a it's a whole continuum, and it's a diesel motor, hydraulic system, uh electronics. And then, of course, a trailer and suspension system and brakes and and they don't live in the best environment, so uh we keep battling that. Um I checked on the dam today. Um the copper dam is holding well. Um the lake level is not coming up at all, but it's certainly not escaping through that copper dam either. So I think it's just aside of the drought, low low rainwater is my best guess, but uh it's stable and holding, so. Be uh Wilson Pond culvert repairs holding up very well. I think we're gonna be okay unless we had torrential rains like they did down in Providence this week. Thank goodness we didn't get that uh, but that's holding well. Uh and I don't know if I mentioned the last meeting. We hired a uh new person for the transfer stations, young old gentleman. His name was uh William Hutes. And he started out there. Um he's a very good addition so far, so if you see him, say hi.
Just paperwork, all straightened out.
Almost.
What what did you say his last name was?
Hutes. It's spelled H E U T Z.
H E U T Z.
Yeah, and he's a resident of Monmouth.
It seems like a nice guy. I've talked to him a couple.
Is he full time?
Uh po- full part-time. He's a regular part-time employee.
Thank you.
Questions?
Any questions?
Just want, Dan, do you wanna uh just kind of put it on the record what's gonna happen with the Ford truck that's sitting down at the town office? As far as the bid process, it it was a concern of a couple of citizens that asked me about it, and I just wanted to make sure we were on the right. I know you said the other day you had it figured out and.
Correct. Uh yeah, actually, this this morning I wrote up an official uh sealed bid um proposal.
Yep.
Um and okay, get it okayed, and it's uh been placed on the truck, taped to the truck. I believe tomorrow Lori's gonna place it on um probably the town website and MMA that it's out for bid.
Okay.
Uh I ran the bid process for two weeks. Um and so that's official and correct at this point.
Good, thank you.
So I talked to to Mary about the cemetery payroll thing. She's in agreement with MMA that the current practice is is not preferred. But she said um to get you through this year, because it's been an ongoing practice so long, it's unlikely that someone's going to, you know, object or make an issue out of it. So she said if we can get a written contract where she's gonna put together for us, we'll have the Cemetery Association sign that. And the next year, we will put it on the warrant and say that the select board will initiate a a contract, a long-term contract to provide those services, so we should be okay. Um for now. The solar bids came in today at two P M. I I briefly reviewed them, but I'll be bringing those to your next meeting once I can put some analysis to them for you. Uh we expect payroll through our new business manager, Barry Talberton Lawyer, to begin in October, so that'll be good. He'll get that out of the office and free up. Uh Lori and Jessica really have been the ones trying to get that done, not completely knowing what we're doing, but asking a lot of questions and getting that done. And to answer the status of the playground, according to the vendor, it is scheduled to be out of production on Friday. So we will see. He gets updates every day. It's been sliding, but right now it says nine-nine, so we'll see.
Done by the end of the season. Yeah, it's in time for snow. Maybe fingers crossed.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next is uh select board reports. I've had um a person question me about uh putting a tree stand and getting permission from the town to hunt on a piece of property that town owns in the bog off the Bog Road. Um and they just wanted to know what the protocol was, if it's something the town manager could give permission for or but there is, I guess there's a law that if you're putting a stand or a camera on a piece of property, you need to have written permission from the property owner. So we would, they just were inquiring who they would seek permission from. They asked if I could sign it, and I said absolutely not, but I will ask and find out who will sign it.
There was an article in today's paper about that very same thing for another town in the Liston paper. I think it was green. That's what I wanna say.
What did they say?
I can find out. I subscribe to the paper, so I can look at it online.
Well, maybe the town manager already knows the answer to this question.
I don't really know the answer. If you want me to allow it, I would I would appreciate it if you would direct me to do so, so I know. Public property, so.
Yeah, yeah.
You could see. I could certainly write a letter and give permission as long as you all are okay with it. I don't think that there's anything that prevents us from doing that, but I will I'll I will check before I do so, but I don't know the answer.
That was the question.
There are laws in place to protect people
Yes.
who give permission to people that use the property or so we don't have to worry about being sued by someone that got hurt doing something if they had permission or there are laws and in the fisheries and wildlife that protect landowners from that stuff, so.
Just fine.
Well, maybe we can, while while Chris is doing a quick research here, I'll give you a quick update on the boat launch on Invesco Lake. Um we are coming to the end of the boat launch uh being operational. Um paving is gonna happen. Uh uh this is a boat launch off of the Holmes Road in Winterup that uh that we've been talking about for the last eight years. Uh paving is gonna happen in the very near future. Uh they're expecting completion uh sometime in October and uh uh they're pretty much done with the work that needs to be done in the water. It's uh it's about time.
Is there a date?
Not yet.
No.
Not a specific date, sometime in October.
Just a type of the ice.
Well, uh the snowmobile club certainly makes use of some of that.
Yeah.
And uh there's uh definitely gonna be some additional parking uh specifically for uh snowmobilers uh up near the Holmes Road. So folks who wanna uh who wanna park uh a rig with a trailer will be space that won't be gated in, uh that'll be accessible to the road. And uh during the fair weather times of the year, that'll be overflow parking um for the folks who have concerns in that particular neighborhood. Uh down near the water, I think they're saying ten slots, twelve slots, somewhere in that neighborhood for uh rigged parking, uh truck and trailer, and then a couple of other additional uh vehicle spots for folks who wanna bring in a kayak and put it on the roof of their car, so uh and there's supposed to be a bathroom facility as well and uh space for uh boat inspection person to uh keep an eye on the comings and goings of invasive plants.
Ken, do you know if they're doing the vault toilet like they have at the Center Beach? Are they doing something like that there, or you don't you really know?
I'm pretty sure it's a porta potty. Paid for by the state. Not a vault, not a vault. Uh if memory serves, I'm pretty sure it's a porta potty.
Is it similar in size to the one over on Woodbury? About lunch, okay.
Uh uh size, you mean like number, number of spaces it.
I assume it's not as big as.
Uh on Woodbury, so
That was kind of.
Probably not that big.
Not that big, okay.
Yeah.
Just for reference.
Yeah, so uh yeah, it's designed for ten vehicles down parked down by the water and then another uh ten or so up at the top of the hill for a super busy day.
Okay, good.
So um the story was about Mechanic Falls and um it said, in other business, Town Clerk Janice Ferry confirmed to the town that hunting is per permitted on town-owned land. The question if hunting is allowed and if the town is liable for any accident came up at last month's council meeting. Ferry said that while the town is not liable, the main department of inland fisheries and wildlife suggests that permits be handed out to persons who wish to hunt on town land and permits are available at the town office. So that's the story from Mechanic Falls. That one's being handled there, so whether or not maybe there's some little form that somebody could fill out and
Or a simple little letter with a note, yeah, whatever.
So I make a motion, we allow this individual to put up a stand on authorize the town manager to issue permission uh to put up a stand on the town-owned land the bog area.
I didn't know we owned land there.
I I will second that.
It's our own land.
It is. It's like a hundred acres out there.
I think the domains owned it, didn't they? At one time, I remember Holly standing up saying she gifted it to the town and said, if you don't wanna take it, I'm not paying taxes, so you're gonna own it.
Good old Holly. Keep all the Mike Cesar.
Well, the tax bill couldn't have been that much.
I know.
I I remember that we uh deeded that to uh Kennebec Land Trust. Oh, at some point. Yeah, like ten years ago. It was, I believe it was in one of those uh bid things we did to get rid of tax-acquired property, and Kennebec Land Trust was the high bidder for a a significant piece out there.
I'm not sure we even paid for it. I think we just gave it to them.
It it's possible. I I thought that they were, because there was a couple of other people interested in it, but they were outbid by Kennebec Land Trust was my recollection, but it's.
So then maybe we don't know. We can't give them a ship, but this is a different, different, different piece.
Yep, different area.
Yeah, I'll put the map and lot on it, so I'm not keeping permission to hunt on the Kennebec.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Lori and I looked and it's a state town of Monmouth on your computer.
Yeah, okay.
It said it's it might even be a hundred and ninety acres. Yeah, so there's a the motion by Kent and a second by Mark to uh have the town manager uh deal deal with the uh of cunning on any property we own on Leeds boat. Is that about right?
Sure, yeah, yeah, okay.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Uh oh, I get um. So before we move on from the select board reports, do you think this is a good time while we're all here and on the record to discuss the camper thing and and?
Sure, if you wanna.
Yeah, uh well, I I'm going, I'm going to suggest uh that uh when we meet, that the trustees of House of Hall meet, we would uh propose that uh Jeff be reimbursed for any costs or uh any uh uh damages or whatever that, you know, repairs that need to be made to get his trailer back whole and uh him satisfied. So and you can you can convey this to.
Really, yeah, I can.
And uh I I think it was just a bunch of little little missteps that.
Can you give me, can, for the purpose of folks at home, can you give us a little background on?
The the camper, the camper that was parked on the fence line on the fairgrounds um for, since the fair went on. Um we were to believe that it belonged to a carnival worker. It was a carnival worker that Paul confirmed that had been arrested during the fair and was still incarcerated. Um how it got tied to the camper, I don't know. I don't remember Paul verifying that fact. Um but some people thought that he did verify that it belonged to the carnival worker, but regardless, it did not. It belonged to Jeff Kemp. So it got removed, towed by a towing company, um and then he started the search, who took my camper? Um and the reason it was there was because he did not use it. It is stored in the pulling ring in the winter. Um he didn't have an occasion to use it, so he brought it out of the pulling ring when the fair went on, and it was gonna be going back into the pulling ring, and that's why it sat there.
Okay.
Um.
And it was damaged in the process?
It was, it had, they had to break the lock on it to get it open, to put the slide out in so they could haul it down the road. So the lock is broken and it's currently being, it's at the repair shop on two O two to have the lock replaced and so that, yeah, there'll be a bill for towing and there'll be a bill for the repairs to the lock.
Oops.
Well, I
Oops.
Doug and I, I how it happened was I drove up here, I said, you know, I've been meaning to ask why there's a camper that's been there since the fair. And Paul said, I know why, and Paul, you know, relayed the story about a carnival worker whose camper it was was arrested during the fair and in jail. And Doug and I were like, so we don't really want a camper there that we don't know whose it is if somebody decides to abitate, you know, decides they wanna live in it and it's not their camper or or us be liable for a camper that's parked there that we don't know the person that owns it, and that's what we.
And just to clarify, you were wearing your hats as comes to all trustees who who managed that property, not not select board members. I just wanted to make that clear.
Doug, we had, you know, Doug and I, the the Comston Hall trustees discussed it and said, I think we better do something about the camper because it shouldn't, you know, be there if something happens to it.
Right.
It's town property, and we are the overseers of Comston Park, so.
Hindsight, probably um a call to the Fair Association and say, hey, your event is done. Why is there still stuff out here? And they would have been able to explain, but it just it thinking it was not, that was not the case, that it
That's right.
So it was just a series of little things that led to
Yeah.
A misstep.
Yeah.
But yeah, we should just rectify it.
Yeah.
We want things to be right with the camps.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh. So that this will go the hill here, what we said.
Yes.
Good, yes. Because we just wanna make him happy, uh satisfied. He was only willing to be happy, probably.
And you guys will make that choice. That's your comes to know.
Yes, which won't happen till the
October.
The first Thursday in October, whatever that may be.
It's the eight. I looked.
Okay. Yeah, the sixth, October sixth.
Oh, six, okay.
Yeah.
Uh with the digital mapping, how's that?
Yes, so we've, we've had a kickoff meeting. They've taken um some of the files that we have a- available. They're gonna, they're gonna take, they they took copies of our paper maps, and then they're gonna start orienting those. And then after that, they will digitize with all of our tax data and all that stuff. So it is a little bit of a process because we don't have digital maps now. We're literally converting paper into into digital maps. So they have to orient those on the earth, and they don't always line up uh to where the buildings are. So they try to make the adjustments, try to make sure that, you know, a line isn't going through the middle of a house and things like, when it's not supposed to, of course.
So w- will these be more accurate than the the maps that are?
They should be relatively comparable. It's just that you will be able to click on them, and then you'll be able to bring up the owner and the tax information all in one place. So you'll be able to, all the vision property record cards will be tied to this, so you won't have to get into the map and then find it in in our assessing system. It'll all be available to you through through one or two clicks. So most of the most um realtors or any or any other professional that uses this stuff, they are very familiar with it. It should cut down on a on a lot of inquiries into the into the town office.
Good. And the tower at Comson Hall was found to be.
Was found to be fine.
Fine, yep.
And we have a report uh to that effect. I'm happy. Did I, if I didn't forward it to you, I'm happy to if you're interested in reading it. It doesn't have that much information, but mostly what MMA was concerned about is when you get to the top, it pitches. And it pitches because when there were no windows in there, they built it like that, so the water could 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 easily drain out. And where some of that pitch went into the side, some of the bottom sill plates are a little rotted. So they were just concerned that, you know, that maybe something was falling up there, but uh when they looked at it, it 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 all appears to be quite solid in the opinion of the engineer. So I forwarded that to our insurance company and they're happy.
Mark would be.
Climb on the ladder or something. I did, yeah.
How was that?
It was pretty neat. It's they having all the the whole balance in there from like the
Yep.
Whatever, the thirties, we'll just throw them.
And you you should be very happy that you spent time on the
At the top.
Yeah, I I called Dennis to get in on the tour. I wanted to walk with the engineer when it happened. He said, oh, we did it yesterday. Well, I know I saw it written, but I just don't remember the date, but
Yeah.
Yeah, it stood there all this time. It's gonna stand there a long.
Oh, yeah.
You ever see any signs of Harry up there?
I have not.
I've only heard Harry.
You went on the roof roof, right? You went on the roof roof, right?
Yeah.
Roof of the tower, yeah.
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 I'm afraid I, I stayed away from the windows in there. Stayed in the middle.
With glass, it's all right.
It's all right, yeah. Just don't get too close to it.
The screen crossing grant for the Beaver Brook.
Yes.
Thing, is that?
Pine tree engineering, it's doing most of the base work for that, so once they have, so their, their preliminary engineering plan, then he was gonna run, run uh, that up the flagpole, but I will uh, I'll check to see the status. I don't know where he is, I haven't talked to him in a while.
But you, like, we don't know what is gonna happen. Uh, anything will, will happen, not this year, probably be.
It's due, they're due this fall, so hopefully we would be able to get some money. You know, I'm, I'm not sure how long their process takes for them to approve these things. I, I assume with the most things with the state takes several months, once you get them in the queue, but um, we did get um, we did already see word that they're gonna replace the current ramps on the Cobbsy boat launch for, for free, and we're in the queue to do a two ramp extension. It was requested by some residents and I applied and the uh, the uh, they had no issue with the extension. They have to evaluate that to determine whether it should be any longer or not. They thought that it was fine. Um, but we have a choice to make once they approve that, if we want to accept those additional ramps or not, but I put it in the queue to see if we could get them. So when I get a, when I get a decision on that from them, I'll, I'll ask you if you actually want the, the new ones. These are the additional.
Yeah, voting dock.
Yep.
I would think they would walk and like, oh, oh.
It's hard when people are coming into dock and they wait for someone to grab their trailer, it's handy to have an extra two or three places to pull boat up to the dock.
You start unloading.
Right.
Yeah. Your boat while you're waiting for someone to get theirs out of way.
It will, it will help, I think. I can, I don't see the downside to it.
That's a busy boat launch.
Oh, my goodness. Lot of moving parts there.
Yeah. And it's a lock to go get your car sometimes, so, you know, it take a while.
Yeah, I got a call from uh, Laurie plus key. Oh.
Me too. Me too. I did too. Like, well, he came to my house.
Okay. Well, he called me.
Yeah.
And uh, he, he is interested in some uh, property that apparently has been foreclosed on, that's down way down on Beaver Brook that his father, not his father, Trudy's father, his, his wife's father uh, had lived there.
I had, I had three different people come in the past month asking, and what, what I've done is because we don't have a policy for that, so what I, what I've told each one of them to do is if they're interested in purchasing it, they need to get one of you folks to put it on your agenda and then you could discuss it, because we don't have a disposal policy right now, that's why they've kind of been hung out. So once we get one, we have a, we have a full policy, but right now it'd be kind of a one-off request that you would have to deal with. So I've told three people to do that, so this, this person followed through.
Yeah.
So if you want it on the agenda, let me know and I can put it on, or if you want to wait until there's a more holistic.
Or he would like to do that for his wife.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, he talked to me about it also. Wow, he's got everybody.
Yeah.
He got a majority, so he thought he was okay.
It is in arrears as far back as the as Trio takes us, which is the two thousand sixteen tax year. And I'd have to go back and see if it's in arrears past it, because it's, it's in full arrears all the way as far as my system right now can see. So we have to go back to the paper records to see how much more they might. Um, oh, but.
What I had told them was that I believe the board was gonna be working on rounding up a bunch of properties that have been tax acquired. Um, and the only way that I really thought that could go forward is if they were listed and they would go out to bid as they've done before. I, I don't know how the town could set a price and sell a property to one particular person without.
How has it been done historically, if you've been involved in them?
Typically, they are put up to bid, just so you can kind of distance yourself from, from what it is, but you certainly it says in the article that authorize you to do it, to do it in the best interest of the town. So you can do it really any way you want. If you wanted to just say, you know, just to find out what all the back taxes are and this person wants it, and no one else has come forward. You certainly have the right to do that, it's just a choice about whether you feel okay doing, you know, picking somebody or whether you'd rather put it up to bid, to be fair to anybody else who might want.
There, there's been some concern about whether all the proper steps were pr- followed
Yep.
to, to make sure the property was actually town property.
Yes, that's, that's not a consistent problem. Some of them are okay, some of them are not. I have, I have multiple lists that um, that Linda and Laurie had put together before, and then some that Laurie and I have put together now um, that have them in the various stages of which ones I felt were gonna be the first ones I was gonna bring to you, because I was a vote confident and I was gonna kind of move down that row and then say, you know, these, I, I don't think so, you need to wipe these out and start over again. So I was gonna bring those to you at some point, for you to make that determination.
Not goal setting, I think, just come up with a
Yep.
Schedule to do that.
That was, that was my concern when I talked to Larry, that, that uh, whether, whether it was clear that we had time.
Yeah.
In any event, all we do is issue quick claim deeds, so we're not really responsible if the title's all, all messed up. I mean, when you buy one of these properties, you are buying it at your own risk, so um, we don't warranty deeds, it's not recommended at all for a town to do that, you know, because you'll never get your money back for all the costs that go into that for, for most of these, you know, they foreclose for five or six thousand, you're not gonna spend all the money to to get the deed quieted. And usually they're quite a mess anyway, because the, the reason we got them is because their mortgage company didn't care, or there wasn't one, or somebody walked away. They're not usually very clean to begin with, so.
I, I, I guess that's it, it's like, what? Uh, on the comment? Oh, let me see if I can see hands here. No hands. Nobody? Okay. Uh, okay. Um, next is uh, Do consider a request from the Conservation Commission to spend one thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and fifty cents from the Whittier Woods Reserve Fund for upgrades to the bog bridges.
So in this past uh, uh, warrant, we created an actual reserve fund for this, so now for there to be expenditure, you all have to authorize that. So this is, this would be taking money out of that fund, which is the, the harvesting monies from down there, and they're gonna uh, they're gonna replace some of those bog bridges, and I think they're gonna make them thirty-two inches wide, so people that need poles or, or assistive devices are, are more comfortable walking on them, that, that's their goal.
Good, is the reserve fund um, did the town authorize us to use that fund to, to expand on this uh, uh, on this Whittier Woods?
Yes. It was very broad, I believe, to include the Cobbsy boat launch and the Whittier Woods property down there, that, that the money in these funds could be used for any of those.
To authorize them to do this.
Yes, okay.
I make a motion, we um, grant the request for the Conservation Commission to spend the monies requested for the bog bridges for the Whittier Woods.
Second. So there's a motion by Chris. A second by uh, Joe to uh, to, to uh, follow the request or allow the request of the Conservation Commission to spend the money for, from a reserve uh, fund to upgrade the bridge, the bog bridges. All those in favor? Thank you. Uh, next, consider and to set the proper tax rate for the tax year beginning April first, twenty twenty-two.
But there's two, two separate sheets with the highlight on them, the yellow numbers are the one that may be of um, interest. So the um, the first one is, is for a, it sets an overlay of forty-six thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars, which is probably about that's the least that you've done in the past. I think, I think the least has been like about forty-five. And the other option would set the overlay at sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars last year. Last year, the, the overlay was fifty-six thousand three hundred ninety-three dollars. You'll see up, you, you'll see on the, the line seventeen um, gives you your minimum tax rate, that, that's, that's allowed with the budget that we've approved. Line eighteen is the maximum rate allowed under law, which is the maximum amount that you can put into an overlay. Um, so what I put in here is Donna kind of put down two options that kind of kept the overlay where, where you've had it sort of in the past, so that the first one is nineteen five zero and the other one is nineteen five five zero. And if you have any questions, let me know. And the, 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 the top line here is the, the tip financing plan amount, that's the maximum amount that can be put into the tip as you authorized at the last last meeting, I think. Yes.
And you explained it to me, that our uh, so uh, our one I guess I always thought that uh, O'Neil raised about uh, four hundred thousand dollars.
Um, if if our, so as our total taxable valuation in the town increases, that slightly changes, so that's probably pretty close. Because the total taxable is four hundred and fourteen million. And then you get a little bit of personal property at two million, so yeah, that's pretty, pretty close number. Yeah. Oh, and the, the, the other thing I wanted, the, the two things I wanted to mention. The, the, the three main driving forces for the mill rate increase is, is between the school department and the county, they, they have raised the town's contribution by about a half a million dollars compared to last year between those two entities, and it's about four hundred and fifty thousand at the school department and fifty thousand for the county tax. The remainder of the increase, because you as a board decided to take as much money as I thought I could calculate out of fund balance to keep the town side flat, is um, our ratio is falling, so our, our rate that we're taxing properties versus what which is what the market value would command or um, or just value for tax purposes, don't look at what you get through your house on the zillow, because that's a different issue. But um, we've fallen down to about ninety, ninety-one percent from a hundred percent last year. So if you take, if, if you take the town's value and we're really only getting ninety percent of what it's worth, our mill rate is naturally gonna increase. State valuation does that ratio, it's two years behind. So what we're looking at right now is twenty twenty-one, and you know from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, housing prices kept going up, so for the next couple of years, you should expect that ratio to fall pretty dramatically. I'm, I'm guessing we've probably when this all flushes out, we'll be down around seventy-nine percent. So keep that in mind when, if taxpayers come to you, they, they will call us, but if they come to you and ask about why their homestead exemption is not twenty-five thousand, that's why. We can only provide exemptions multiplied by that ratio, so it'd be twenty-five thousand times point nine one is what the homestead exemption gets to be, because it has to be kept fair from town to town. Because if we were at fifty percent and you gave a twenty-five thousand dollar ratio, it would be, it would be the equivalent of a fifty thousand dollar homestead exemption in Winthrop, say, if they were at a hundred. So the state makes you equalize all that across, across their ratio studies. So those are all the drivers of really what the tax rate is. It's the school county tax and the ratio is falling. So with that being said, when we get into the budget uh, season, I will be asking you whether you want to consider starting to put some money aside to either do a market update or a revale, because I think two, three years out, our ratio is gonna be pretty poor and, and we're gonna want to get that back towards a hundred percent again.
Think we have to.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're supposed to, yep.
Is there a requirement from the state for us to do a revaluation if we fall below a certain threshold?
Technically, you're not supposed to fall below um, seventy percent. The penalty is tree growth reimbursement. There's not a big stick, it's just that the further you get away from a hundred, the less equity there is across the whole town, because some some areas of town may have fallen to fifty and others are at eighty, so you've got people that aren't, aren't being taxed at the same rate, so that's really where the fairness argument comes in later on.
So clarifying question on the TIF financing plan, this hundred thirty-five thousand three hundred eighty dollars versus hundred thirty-five, seven twenty-seven. Um, that includes our decision at the last meeting to include the additional CMP valuer, substation valuation in the, in the TIF.
Yes, it does.
And so it's gone from a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty-five, so that's really a fifteen thousand dollar difference.
That's right, okay. And they're different on each page, because when you do the tip, you do it backwards, so you set the mill rate and then we multiply it by that amount, so if the mill rates um, higher in the, in the thirteen fifty-five, you're gonna, you're gonna have slightly more money in the TIF. The TIF calculates backwards from the property tax rate, you set the tax rate without the TIF in it and then you put the TIF back in, so that's why the TIF number moves depending on the on the mill rate.
Chicken at the end.
Yes.
Does, did this happen first or does that?
Right, the TIF goes second, so wherever you set the, it changes the TIF.
Justin, how does this mill relate to what it was last year? How much has been increased?
So right now, we're at eighteen eighty. I talked to Donna over in Savadis, they went up uh, ninety-five cents. And a couple other towns, she says they're all going up.
That's eighteen eighty on a thousand.
Yeah. Eighteen dollars and eighty cents.
That, what, what is it last year?
It, that's what it was last year.
And what is it this year?
That, that's what you have to decide, so it'll either be, well, the two, the, the, the two options that are here, you can, you, you're obviously allowed to change this, but it's it's um, nineteen dollars and fifty cents or nineteen dollars and fifty-five cents. Those are the two options that are in front of you right now.
And does the statute guide us uh, as to what the overlay should be and what our range of options are in terms of?
No, it, the guidance is the, is the minimum and maximum rates that are on line seventeen and eighteen, you have to be between those. Based on the amount we have to raise and the value of the town.
Seventeen and eighteen.
Yeah.
So the, the guidance is somewhere between nineteen three nine four and twenty-three six three.
That's correct.
Those are the statutory limits.
Yep.
And um, just refresh my memory on exactly what, what the purpose of the overlay is.
The purpose of the overlay is to basically account for um, any um, typically what it's used for is abatements in a way. Or errors in the assessment, so if, if Donna has double counted a camp somewhere, we clearly are gonna have to bait that. Um, towns use it for the abatement process, it's not really what it's for, it's really there to try to make sure that you have enough money to pay the bills, so if, if revenues don't show up or whatever, you've given yourself a little bit of wiggle room based on um, uh, other communities, they do use it, uh, some communities when they you're not supposed to do this, but I'm just giving you the reality, like the law doesn't say that this is what this is for. But in reality, some towns, when they make a mistake and they chew through their fund balance too quick, they will pad this overlay number so that they can get the money back into their checking account, so they don't have to take out cans.
Um, so they use it for increasing cash flow, basically.
Yeah.
And how is our cash flow right now?
We have plenty of money i- i- in our fund balance, so I wouldn't recommend that you put it in there for that purpose, this would just be so that if there's a downfall, we have projected revenues in here, and if they don't show up, we do curtailments is what we have to, because we don't have we can't get into the fund balance without going to town meeting, so if the, if my guesses on, on our revenues for excise tax or something fall off, then we have to cut back on, on on what our spending was, just like anybody would, if you don't have the revenue coming in to pay your bills. Um, most, most of the overlay is really just to cover you for abatements and things that may come in, if there was a mistake in the commitment, or if there's a flood of people that come in that uh, feel that they're overvalued and Donna happens to agree with it, or you guys happen to agree with those assessments. Um, it doesn't take that many errors to come up with, with fifty thousand dollars if you have a a camp on the lake that is over assessed and that, you know, they have a ten thousand dollar tax bill and you know, you gotta give them three or four, it doesn't take very many of those for you to start feeling that.
Can you, can you give us an idea of what? I mean, I'm trying to r- remember what we've done in the past in terms of, I mean, I've been on the board for a year now.
Yep.
So I'm trying to place exactly how many abatements we've considered in the past year. And I could probably count them on one hand.
Yep.
Um, true. Uh, so at least in the past year, it doesn't seem like um, we've had a whole lot of need to tap into the overlay, and if we can you give me any uh, an, an idea of if we, if we if we set aside this overlay, uh, approve the overlay? Um, and then we don't use it, what happens to the fund?
It falls, it would if all other revenues, if, if everything here appears as though it's supposed to, revenue sharing shows up at that seven hundred twenty-five thousand, which is projected by the state.
Yeah.
If all the revenues come in and we spend just what we had, that forty-six thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars would fall into your fund balance, which is the money you utilize this year to do paving and stuff like that. All right.
So then it essentially gets saved, right, and the taxpayers would just realize. So then it essentially gets saved, right? And the taxpayers would just realize the benefit. On the next budget.
Yep.
When we consider what we want to go forward with the fund balance.
Basically. Yeah, okay.
Through the years, it's varied of our abatement business.
And tell me more.
It's, and I don't know, I know that one year we had a big problem with the, what some people have called the gold coast.
I remember that one.
You remember?
Yeah.
And we had to.
Howard, Howard Drive, Howard. Was it Howard?
I think so. Yeah, yeah. That's how my Kipawat.
Yeah, yeah.
And and. Uh, the vision appraisal had done a revow, I guess, or updated stuff. And they had, uh, they used the wrong number and it's too complicated for me to. To explain. It's, you know, very much Donna's stuff. Uh, and so we had to do a lot of abating for that, for all those folks down there.
They didn't have many sales in that area, so they took one or two of them and they applied it to all of the properties down there. And then when the abatements came in, Donna disagreed with those assumptions that they made on that neighborhood. And they came in and you had a lot of abatements that year.
A roomful.
Yes. But I also believe in that two thousand seventeen, because you were doing the revow, the overlay line was like a hundred and thirty thousand. Because you were doing a townwide revow, so you didn't know how many you were gonna get. Typically, you generate, you know, that at ten or fifteen times the normal rate and you don't know what you're gonna get when you do one of those. So you, you you give yourself some room in those times and you can kind of see it going from seventeen, it was like a hundred and twenty. And then it kind of went to seventy and then it's kind of fallen into this fifty sixty thousand range now for, I think, three, four, five years, something like that.
So if I understand this correctly, we went with the sixty seven thousand dollar in overlay. Someone with a three hundred thousand dollar home, their taxes are going to be fifteen cents more expensive than they would be if we went for the forty six thousand dollar overlay.
Fifteen cents per thousand.
No, it's it's five cents.
Five cents. Okay, okay.
Yep. So their tax would be. So I don't, I don't know if anyone's gonna have a big issue with saving fifteen cents on their taxes. Or paying fifteen cents more.
Yeah.
When it comes down to.
Small potatoes.
Yeah.
So if we set the. The rate at what's shown on seventeen, which is nineteen thirty nine. Then there wouldn't be any over overlay. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So we need an overlay just for these emergency situations.
But you can pick any number you want. These are just kind of the ones that put you in the in the ballpark, because obviously I could, I could print one out for every. Every penny between nineteen thirty. But if you want something slightly less, we can do that. I can just tell you what the total would be later on, but.
Well, I'm I'm of the mind that we would go with the lesser amount.
Nineteen fifty.
The the nineteen fifty amount resulting in a forty six thousand, four ninety nine overlay. Uh, I, we haven't. Things have been pretty placid in terms of our our valuations. The economy seems to be pretty. Predictable at this point.
You as an economist per se.
You still get paid and.
Doesn't matter.
Weatherman and economist. I can be as wrong as I want, but I still get paid.
Yeah, and at our last meeting, we we did set aside. For good incentive reasons. We did set aside some additional funding for the TIF district. And so, I, I think it is sensible for us to go, even though it's only fifteen cents for a three hundred thousand dollar home.
It's trying to save themselves.
It's something.
Yeah.
And so I make a motion that we approve. Uh, the mill rate of. Uh, point zero one nine five zero zero, resulting in an overlay of forty six thousand, four ninety nine oh seven.
So, uh, there's a motion by Kent to, uh, uh, set the. Mill rate at. Point zero nine, uh, point zero one nine five, uh. With an overlay of forty six thousand, four hundred ninety nine dollars and seven cents. For the overlay. Uh, all those in favor? I guess I said.
Yeah, you didn't want to say he was setting the mill rate at point. Oh, nine, that would be bad. I would be scattering my reservation. So with that, I need to, is you got to sign on each of these spots, green markers, that's like four or five different spaces. For you to sign there.
I happen to see, that's from Craig Hickman, his. Notes that he does every, uh. Maybe week, I'm sure.
No, I haven't seen this.
Oh, and that was one of the things he talked about was, and it was a a good article, a a good section on the, what's going on in North Carolina. Uh, with the Diane Textec, him doing the wells and and what's up. He's that there.
Yeah, when we get to goal setting, we can talk more about that. Uh, I got a lot to read.
Yeah. There were a number of communications with the bird people. The pearl people.
You mean the cannon people?
And and with with Pat. You know, um, do we go, he he wrote to Brett Kohler. Uh, he wrote to the commissioner of agriculture. Oh, maybe took it away. It's Pat, the, the Lord officer.
Yes, yeah.
That's not it. That's the pilot.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, and I spoke to Craig Hickman about that issue too.
I wrote, I sent a letter from us, all of us to, he he called me. Did he call you as well?
Cause he was calling me to find out your contact information at our station here.
He hasn't, or I know.
Okay, well, I I gave him, I gave out your phone number.
Okay.
And and we had a long conversation. He committed to trying to find a neighbor to neighbor solution that would. Encourage. Cooper urged us to explore a non-noise alternative. Without necessarily having to change the law.
I met with Mr. Cooper also after our last meeting.
Yep.
Um, and he seemed open to resolution. Uh, but they just didn't have a solution that was gonna help them right now.
Right now.
Are they in the middle of harvesting yet?
They are. They were, they were actually picking that. That crop of apples.
Yeah.
Two weeks ago when I was there.
Yeah.
They they were hauling those apples on the tractor. So I'm, I'm hoping it's being completed with that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Harvest, I would think. Yeah.
Well, that was, that's consistent with what Mr. Cooper said to me on the phone. And I think we just need to. Remind him of that commitment when we get to next season. Some of those, some of those, I mean, Pat did quite a lot of research. And, uh, some of those deterrent methods require. Uh, you know, a three monthly time.
Yeah.
Yeah, the fee thing.
Yeah.
Sounds like, yeah.
You gotta train them.
Yeah, train them to regular corn before you. Think it's corn.
Yeah.
It traumatizes them like they give off.
I don't, I don't know.
It makes them have like a seizure almost, but it doesn't hurt them long term.
Yeah, it just kind of.
I think he's.
And, you know, crows are incredibly smart. So, you know, there's. Can't just shoot them away and expect them not to come back because they don't, they, I mean, I found it. I found an effective way of keeping them out of my corn because if, when the corn gets this tall, they go and pull up. Corn that's this tall and then eat the seed. And so years ago, my father found, um, cause tin pans, you know, and all that, all the stuff that, you know, my grandfather did. Doesn't work. I mean, they're scared of it for the day, but then they're over it.
Yeah.
So they make this tape that's like a monofilament tape and it's about this wide, but it's thin. And you string it between. Um, posts that you pound to the ground. And when the wind blows in it, it vibrates and it also makes this little reflective thing. And that is, and I string it over my rows of corn and they don't bother. They don't because it's a visual thing, but of course you can't take this. It's not like, you know, the matrix that you can have lasers going across the, you know, um, apple trees. It's just too big of an area. So I've used it very successfully, but.
They did have a bunch of deterrent stuff out there. I drove around the perimeter of the orchard. Um, and they had, I would say at least a half a dozen of these balloon pictures with the eyes. Um, yeah, reflector tape hanging off them and they had other things out there that they were, they were making an effort for sure.
They're, they're. Called corvids, the those class of birds like ravens and crows and. And they're, and blue jays, and they're really smart, they're the smartest birds. I I've read somewhere that they have the intelligence, intelligence of a seven year old. Because they, they work together, they, they can do things with maybe with some some basic tools and.
Yes.
Uh, and Mark Twain has a great story, uh, that I used to have. You guys read Baker's Blue Jay Yard and. Very funny, very funny story.
Yeah, what is it? Baker's what?
Baker's Blue Jay Yard. Another one that was really that I used to love is my grandfather's old ram, which is outrageous, so funny. So we're on to goals. And objectives for the K. For the next twelve months. And I must say, my, my goals go beyond twelve months.
Do you want to lead, sir?
No, I I would rather, oh, I, no, I don't wanna, uh, do I want to lead? I mean.
Of course.
What? Yeah, I do. Broadband expansion. And I guess, I guess the state is working on it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we're like development business. Do you, do you want me to send you a list?
If you have it written down, that would be great. I won't write it down.
Okay, I'll send you this.
Okay.
The repair of the dam, catalog, the digital mapping, all this stuff we're working on, sale of Fercos property. But this is something we, our third office staff person. I I wonder that right now, of course, it's with with having.
Kimberly out, yeah.
Kimberly.
Is she out for an extended period of time?
Yeah, she, she broke her heel. So she's, she, right now she can't drive.
Oh.
So we're, we're trying to get some of these stuff ready for the election. So. Lori's been kind enough to go pick her up a few days to bring her in so that, cause she can, she can work and get around, but she's not allowed to drive. Cause she, it's that, it's her gas pedal foot.
Yeah.
Um, so we're hoping.
Let me ask how she managed to do that.
She was, um, uh, power washing. She has a shingle house and she was, she has to every five or six years, power wash it off. And she was on a six foot ladder and came.
Ladders are usually how you break.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it was second time she told me that she'd broken that. And it's already has. Steel and stuff in it. Okay, uh, downtown development with a new sidewalk and old fashioned street lights, including underground wiring. Continuing support of downtown businesses with grants for facade improvements. Continuing support for Mama Museum as it continues to improve the appearance of its buildings. And I know that, well, the Wagon Road Bridge is on the. Main.
State office.
Yep, yep. Even though, and they keep misspelling it.
Yeah. It's a million ways to spell wagon. Uh, it's only one, right?
It's the same with cotton.
That's right.
Uh, Wilson, the Wilson Pond Road, Jellystone Campground Culver Replacement, which is in the works. And then paving projects, uh. The Cressy Road, of course, the, the Wilson Pond Road to Beaver Brook, which is probably way out there. Ward Road to the Wayne Town Line. Uh, Painter Road, which is down off, uh, Bridge Road. Peace Hill Road, which is up there by the. Cemetery Road Extension, which that the paving of that might be more needed sooner than others, I think. Uh, and of course, the continued repaving of current roads that need to be kept up. I don't know, the sidewalk replacement for Pleasant Street, there's a sidewalk there, but we we haven't heard anybody say. It needs to be done. Uh, it's a real crappy sidewalk, I mean.
It's pretty much nonexistent and it only went.
Short way.
A very short way. It only went to. Bragton's House, essentially, I think. Which is now John Settings House. Yeah, and then it just ended. I mean, it wasn't.
Yeah.
And you really couldn't walk on it anyway.
What year was it on?
Wasn't. Yeah.
The general store. Rather than.
It just, it was so short there.
And then the big, a biggie is the sand and salt shed for public works down here. And, uh. And maybe, I don't know, an expansion of, uh, because some kind of a shed for public works building. To put cover over their, a lot of their equipment, which is left out all year round. That's what I.
Yeah, I I think that the big thing is I'd like to have a consistent schedule of the. Tax acquired property to be able to start pecking through those and making sure that we're, we've got. All the checks and balances in place to do it right and know that we've got all the cards. That the people have gotten all the notifications that they've supposed to have, that that we've got like an SOP for that. Um, and it's done and done right because there's no way we should have eight pages front and back.
Yeah.
Of that, that shouldn't be happening. And even for people that are living in the houses, they they need to know because it's. Why is it okay for them not to pay their taxes, but? The majority of people are. So, you know, there has to be some sort of. I, I guess, um, you know, there has to be some sort of realization that you can't just not pay taxes.
And there are options like poverty abatements.
Exactly.
Really can't pay, there's ways to get, if you, you have to follow a process, but.
That's right.
Yeah.
That if people aren't, that they get the information on how to, how to do that, but, um. I don't think that ever has been done. I mean, people didn't know that they could go that route. That there wasn't, you know, okay, you haven't paid your taxes. Do you know that there's this? You know, so when they're getting the. Fifth letter for the fifth year, you know, whatever it is. Whatever you've done in other places, having been a part of that and unorganized territories, you know, I'm sure you ran into it. And there was a standard operating procedure for what happened and when they got the information. If we have that same standard and if the state's using that standard, then, you know, hopefully it's the right standard for us to be. you know, hopefully it's the right standard for us to be using.
We were even more cautious because we couldn't get rid of them unless we went to the legislature. So we had to go in front of the tax committee and ask them to get rid of them. They did not like that role at all, I can tell you that. They hated that role. That's not what they signed up for.
Yeah, yes. So.
Yeah.
And I know that some of that was cleared, so I think that maybe if we saw a new list. Because I have my own list, I'd like to see, you know, what we've collected. Um, and what we've been successful with, because that first list we got was huge. It was the biggest.
I think a lot of people reacted to it.
Yes.
Came in and.
Yes.
Took care of it.
Yeah, exactly. So, yeah, but I mean. You're supposed to pay your taxes, so. It's not like the people don't know that. I think that's the biggest thing for me is just having a procedure for that, because there really hasn't been.
Are yours in a particular order, Doug, or are they just, or just kind of? The only reason I ask is because it my ask for you would be for you to kind of prioritize, yeah, prioritize that for me, so I know, because obviously I can't. That's not all gonna get done right now.
Yeah.
Right now, for various reasons, but if you guys have like a top five that you definitely want me to have done, you know, for this next incoming year or six or ten or whatever it is. If you guys can come to some consensus, but maybe if there's others that wanna add, if I don't know if anybody has anything else to add first before.
Well, I've got a few that are sort of in the pipeline that haven't quite, haven't quite finished off yet. And so uh, one of them is uh, the use of the sticker system for the transfer station. Uh, finishing off the implementation of that. Uh, uh, another is uh, uh, and and uh, we've, we've already expended or at least approved the expenditure of like eighty or a hundred thousand dollars on this, was the uh. The North Monmouth uh, Water Survey feasibility study.
Yep.
Um, I know that that's a work in progress. Yeah, the good news is, and I think Craig Hickman has sort of echoed this too in his note. Is that uh, uh, Tech Tech has agreed to uh, uh, test people's wells for free. And that can actually be part of our feasibility study if we know what those results are. So uh, the Water Association might actually not use all of the funds that we've approved, uh, because uh, the testing piece is being offered very generously by Tech Tech.
Yeah, they're, they're bid from that company was actually significantly less than what you authorized. So right now, unless there's anything. You'll, you should be getting like fifty, fifty-five thousand of that back. Yep. That you authorized.
So uh, it's also, it's also interesting to note, and I've had a couple of conversations. Um, I, I need to touch base with the Water Association. I haven't talked to them properly in like three or four weeks. Uh, but uh, it's also interesting to note that um, they're getting sophisticated enough information from some of the testing that they're um, able to trace it back to the source. Because they understand what the, the specific chemical composition of various manufacturing and other types of processes that include P P S. So, um, so that may actually be part of what it is that we find out is not only the extent of the plume that's in the aquifer in uh, in North Monmouth, but uh, perhaps where did, where did it come from? Um. Uh. It's kind of a standard operating thing, but the audit from twenty twenty-one and our audit uh, for the most recent fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Um, those are going to be important pieces because those will actually give us another look at our uh, our uh, unencumbered amounts. Uh, and exactly, you know, what it is that we have in terms of uh, of uh, a savings account that we built up over time and, and to what degree that uh, savings account, air quotes around savings, but savings account um, is growing or shrinking. Um, because there, there may be uh, there may be more opportunity to take care of some deferred maintenance. If we still see a lot of inflation uh, and we're only earning one or two percent on the cash that we have on hand. Uh, there may be better investments for us to be making. And uh, then losing the difference between that and inflation. Um, and uh, a, uh, one that the Economic Development Committee is, is uh, has been working on and I'm, I'm hopeful that we might be able to consider this by November. Uh, November's election is a revision to the guidelines for our TIF district. If, if you all recall, we took a survey. We asked the, at the last election, we asked the citizens what it is they wanted their TIF funds to be focused on. And they gave us a whole list of priorities. Uh, number one was multipurpose trails. Um, trails that are not only walking trails, but also snowmobile and ATV trails. Uh. But also uh, public access to water and protecting uh, uh, water, uh, protecting our lakes. So uh. Those elements don't currently exist in our TIF document and we have to file uh, with the state in order to make changes. In order for us to file with the state to make changes, we have to ask the voters' permission first. And so, um. Reagan LaBreschel is working on some language that uh, I, I'm hoping she'll have in front of us in the next I think the next meeting or meeting following that we can consider. And uh, look at putting together as a warrant item for November's election. So that we can keep that process moving and we can send the message to uh, you know, to the voters who filled out that survey that we're actually paying attention to what they had said. Uh. And then the last one, it's a small one, but it's uh, it's an important one. Um, uh, I one of the goals that we've discussed, I don't know that we've done a whole lot about is advertising for uh, vacancies on our committees.
Yeah, that's just like, because we're just buried in. But how, it's, it's on there. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so I mean, we need to, we need to make sure that our committees are are at a minimum up to a quorum and moving forward with what it is that uh, that, that people want to get done. And speaking of that, um, uh, now that the Recreation Committee has a quorum. Uh. We've, we've asked for some ideas for uh, you know, more inclusive, broad, broadening. Yeah. And, and also some additional programs that go beyond just youth, youth oriented programs, right? Programs for senior citizens that um, could be physical programs or could be uh, uh, non-physical programs.
They had, Joe sent me an email today and they want to meet with you because they want to know what their status is.
Excellent.
So they, they reached out, I was gonna put it on you, either your next agenda or the next one, whenever I can.
Can't wait to make it.
Yeah.
So my question on the TIF district, I know that um. When, you know, it's, it's what, from Maple Street to?
Good, Berry Road.
Berry Road, right? And because when Buffy built that, she had to ask for a waiver, correct?
And they've added certain lots, certain jack traps on Ridge Road is now a part of that.
And I like.
District, plus there's a bunch of lots.
Yeah, like. In the past, um, the Masons asked for a facade. But they are on the other side of Maple Street, so they didn't qualify.
Lot is not in the, in the map.
From what I understand, it is not because they asked for some facade money because of the belt out, making the clock work and also a broken stained glass window. I know we've had that discussion about it.
Sure.
So, I mean, that building, I think, is vali- as valuable as the other historic buildings from town. And um. Because of the Harry Cochran penciling and, you know, it was the Congo Church and all of that, but um, I'd like to be able to hopefully be able to help them, you know, and then if Marco and Lindsay ever need something, make sure that they're you know, that is a thriving business in Monmouth and it's one that people come from miles around to go to Stevens. And I'd like to be able to make sure that they have what they need if they ever need it.
Sure. So. So if we wanted to propose some changes to the, the maps.
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, that would be the time to do it.
Yes.
And uh, we would, because we're up against the maximum allowable percentage, we would need to take some parcels out.
Yeah.
My suggestion would be to look at, there's a, there's a number of parcels uh, that are under, uh, large ones that are under CMP power lines that really don't produce a whole lot of value for the TIF. They're fairly, they're taxed at a fairly low rate to begin with.
Back acreage, you know?
Yeah.
Sometimes they have to buy a big triangle to run the power down one side and they own this.
Right.
It's not, they're very not on road frontage or anything. It's just.
They have very little value, they have very big footprint with regard to the state maximum allowable percentage of acreage from Monmouth within the TIF district. So we'd have to shift some of those
Mm-hmm.
around to to put some additional um, uh, lots in. But that's totally doable.
Yeah.
Totally. And uh, as far as the, it's also been pointed out, um. And a language correction could fix this, I, I imagine.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we have to double check that with the state, but I'm pretty sure that um, if we are explicit, there was, there was a problem maybe ten years ago, where someone wanted to do a roof within the TIF district, but they got turned down because it wasn't considered a facade, wasn't explicitly listed as a facade.
It's, and it's explicitly uh, removed from being able to do that with the facade.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and we could consider putting that back in if we wanted to.
Rooms.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
As we know, if you lose the roof, you lose the buildings. It doesn't make much sense to have paint on the front and not have a roof, so.
I think when Kelly tried to. That, that was, I think, maybe Mark. I, I don't, I remember they got the grant for the, the painting of the front of the building when Marty did that.
Yeah.
Um, but I didn't know that they applied. I know they did roofing on that building, but I didn't know they had applied for it.
Yeah.
Do it.
Yeah.
Because of the language in the document.
Yep.
But it's my understanding that the state would approve, the state would allow municipality to include a roof as part of a facade grant if we decided we wanted to do that.
That's big, yeah.
So that could be a decision point that we think about.
Nice.
Roofs are expensive.
Yeah. Well, especially when asphalt is, and, and now metal, the, the way it is, sorry. And you have to wait like eight months to get your metal roof, so luckily I did mine when I did last. I think that, um, you know, priority wise, making sure that we follow through with the rec committee information because of the fact that so many townspeople are looking for that type of um, amenity and um, having that and uh, figuring out whether or not it's something that's doable with a kind of a stipend director, whether or not we need to look for a director that can give it more time.
Yep.
And uh, know that we can move forward with having programs.
Yep.
That reach all ages. So. I think that's really important. So that would probably be in my top five, that the tax stuff would be my number one. I want to have a plan for that. And then in the top five would be then definitely the, making sure we have a plan for the rec committee and using its building now, so.
But, but, does, does your well get tested?
Yeah, I, I just got mine tested.
Yeah, the, the, but Tech Tech doesn't do it?
Tech Tech did do it.
They did do it. They're good. Yeah.
After I started shaking the bushes out there a little bit. Uh, amazingly, uh, within the two days, everybody on the block up and down the street got a letter from Tech Tech laying out what uh, what they were willing to do and uh, what we needed to do uh, in return to get action. And so now most of the people have uh, expressed their interest at Tech Tech. And uh, Tech Tech was out there two days taking samples for uh, wells. Uh, pretty much everybody on the whole street starting that well, all the way up, I don't know how far up, because I haven't followed the guy. Gets water now uh, every Monday.
Um, that's good. That's really good. They're doing that.
And so that's, that's where we're at. Uh, there's, I think I know maybe uh, three, maybe four people have got some kind of uh, filtering system put on their well and they're trying to see if that will take out all the I call it garbage. Uh. But uh, it, it, it hasn't been a long enough time. I don't think they get a good reading on that yet. So, I mean, uh, progress is being made. Uh, Tech Tech is doing a wonderful job. It's just was no communication when we started. Uh. So.
Have you, have you gotten results from your well?
No, that's, it takes eight weeks to get the results.
I'm suggesting a, a goal that we could look at is to assure a secure and efficient electoral process. Um, there's a lot of talk about possible mischief in the voting process coming up, uh, and I don't think we can rest laurels and say that, that's not gonna happen. I mean, I think we have to be proactive, make sure that uh, there is no mischief and that the processes continues to be efficient and secure.
No, that's not your, your sweet spot.
Not my strength, but we can, we can do our best.
Well, and Linda, I think, had left some.
Yeah, she has very, yeah, she has very detailed manuals, so.
Yes, it was her thing.
Followed the checklist.
Yes, and I think that, you know, she had really put together a nice little package for that, so.
How, how are we set for electoral workers?
We haven't had uh, that much difficulty getting people to serve up there. It's, it's pretty much the same crew, but it's been the same crew for a while. Linda has, has that group up there. Pretty well trained now. They know where all the stuff's supposed to be. They seem to know their, what they're doing. Um. It's not, it's not always like that. And sometimes, I mean, these things, right, you have a small town, there's this one person that's the clerk for four hours a week and they do their best and people are out there doing, doing their best. But here, they have a pretty good group up there who's been doing it at least for the last three years or so. And they seem very knowledgeable of what they were doing. They didn't, they didn't need much intervention from Kimberly, really. She, she ran the, um. She got the machine set up for them and all that, because that's kind of the clerk's job. And then a- after that, the town staff kind of steps out of the process and it's the, it's the it's the party volunteers. You know, you got your Democrats and Republicans, they look over each other's shoulder and that's, that's sort of what keeps the integrity of the of the process, those volunteers, because they're not involved.
So Maine, I think Maine of, of many states, along with quite a few others, has the painter ballot uh, backup, a- and, and I think that uh. It, what I've read, like when uh, China, those has said, a- a- and I guess the governor feels uh, that is the very, very good, secure system. She, she was on the radio tonight uh, with concerns about election, you know, yeah. Safety and harassment and that.
Yes, yes, yeah. Yeah, that's been a concern in certain, certain communities. I think, I think the 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 big bill that went through this time was. Was uh, proposed because of what happened in Waterville. There were people going into the polling places and threatening the clerk and the poll workers. So now they've made that a more significant crime. You can't go into a polling place and threaten the people that are working here. Everything that Doug went through on his list, everything I had was covered.
Your one through ten, do you have anything that's at the top of your list?
Um, I I you think there's four or five that are, that are pretty critical. I mean, the properties that we need to dispose of. Is the paving of the roads in town. I mean, that's a big thing. Someone's coming to complain about something, it's because their road has too many potholes. Uh, with the cost of paving, you can only do so much. Um. I mentioned about the request I got for sidewalks on Blaisdell Hill Road. We know that's kind of a far fact, but. There was one citizen that would love to have those. Um, I don't think we need to add it to our, with the goals because it hasn't seemed practical. Yeah, I mean, everything we've, we've hit, like Ken said, the people are interested in recreation stuff. Um, should make sure that we do stuff related to that to show them that we're paying attention to what they're asking for, for sure. What I'll do is I'll take, I'll take his list and the input that you all have and I'll create. Sort of what I think is the, is the immediate ones and the ones that'll be like, you know, a year or whatever out because we need a new budget, you know, like the salt shed or. Whatever that might be. And I'll bring that back to you all. You guys can, you know, you guys can edit it or modify it.
Oh, I'll prioritize this.
Okay, yeah.
Have we come up with a plan for salt priority? Is that the salt, is that the, what we're doing, the salt priority? I know Dan spent some time talking about.
The way that I think that we're, I think the way that Dan wants to approach it and and we, we can have another conversation about this is he wants to do. Salt priority this year as, as much as practical, but with not having the new truck.
Yeah.
And not having some of the equipment all, all in place kind of early enough. He hasn't really had enough time to. Get the sanding equipment modified and all that, like Pete Coughlin said. So he says he's going to try to do his best with what he can. Um, and we'll just kind of see how it goes. One of his biggest issues right now is he doesn't have enough people to plow or plow the roads this winter. And with the dirt roads, you have to run a separate truck. You can't. So he's already, he's got six routes, I believe, and he's only got four people that can drive them, so. We already have a problem. So adding that sort of limitation to some of these trucks may not be practical this year with the limited staff.
Yeah.
We talked at the staff meeting the other day, and if we don't make any headway, we're probably going to be coming to you. To ask for basically a backup plan, like, should we consider. Finding a contractor that could maybe do the dirt roads or something like that. We just don't, we don't have the manpower. If we had a. An extended storm, they would run out of basically hours that they could safely plow and they'd have to stop and. So we kind of have to figure out. He's got the road prioritized based on the major traffic routes, but some of the other ones may, may wait a long time. So we're going to have to make a decision about. You know, what that means and how comfortable you are with how long people might have to wait. So we'll bring that to you when we kind of get a better idea.
Uh, sounds like a reasonable contingency plan.
I talked with Dan a little bit and he said one of the problems trying to hire new drivers is the competitive pay. Um, and where they have the union contract for pay is locked in and there's no adjustment for. So he can't, you know, you can't offer anyone more money because it's in the contract. So it's challenging to. Get people to do that job for that money. We're considering another proposal uh, to bring to you, which might be to add a stipend to Class A drivers so that we can get. We'd have to have an MOU with the contract, so we'd have to have you agree and then have them agree, but maybe, you know. Winter right now, I think adds like a dollar twenty-five an hour to anybody who has a Class A license that's kind of encouraged their. Their staff to just go take that test, so they think the extra money. So we may bring something like that to it. And we'll see how you might feel about that, but we don't know yet. We're still pondering all our options.
We've got to do what.
Yeah, we're kind of, we're kind of stuck. See, Dan said, there's the fire department, have any drivers that are qualified, they could drive a plow truck or a, a fire truck?
Yeah, we do, but uh, we usually need them during storm calls, so.
Drive the plow truck to the, you know.
Put a plow on.
There's a great idea, multipurpose fire trucks.
So can I, uh, can I add to your list of goals? Yeah, I think, I think we were invited, the department heads to be part of this meeting and establish a list. I don't have, I don't have a list and my goal is going to probably be a long-term five, ten-year goal, but I like to see it on paper. And of course, that's something to do with our stations, uh, which are outdated. Um, outgrown and we need to do something, you know, uh. I've said this before, it's either going to be replace the north station and move it further back. And and add to it a little bit for, for more storage space. Because we're, we're currently storing our antique engine two at Highmore Farm. Uh, our fire prevention trailer is at one of my assistant chief's houses. Um, you know, we're pretty tight in that station now with our, our Marine eighty-four. Someday, we'd like to possibly make that a larger boat and we're not going to have the facility to store that. Uh, we also have a goal to get a UTV for forestry fires at some point. And we just don't have the space to store this needed equipment. Um, and then the center station, we've outgrown for, for several years now, our meeting room. And we're just very tight. And if, if we can't get approved for a new public safety bill and. Uh, to come, either combine the two stations or combine the center station with the police department. Um, because of the, the price tag on that, then a proposal would be to add a second floor meeting room to the current center station. And that would give us our needed space, at least for our meeting purposes and training. Um, so I'd like to maybe put together a, a billing committee, which we kind of currently have one and, and maybe. Get some proposals and estimates and and shoot for, you know, a five or ten-year goal. Um, but we, as a town, we really got to start thinking about this, um. You know, we're, we're, we're overdue for this. Um, we just kind of keep kicking that can down the road, so. Uh, I'd just like to put that on the list of goals. I, I know it's going to be further down the list, but if we can make it on paper, it'd be nice. So that's my goal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're all. For that, it's very helpful.
Good.
Okay, thank you. So we're on to the, the warrant number. He said it, said it late and the reason it was late today is because of the Monday holiday.
Yeah.
So they were, they were trying to get it done. I emailed about three thirty. We're working on it.
That's fine, because I got up here and I'm like, oh, I didn't see that yet, but then it was there when you left and. I did.
Is that the, that's the next, that's it, right?
Yeah.
Oh, I just want to make sure.
Can you explain what this is? I mean. You, you come in with a bunch of expenses and we vote on, what, what is that about?
The warrant?
Yeah.
I can't expend any money out of the treasury without your permission, so we put all of the invoices that we have every two weeks. Into that warrant and then they list them out on that, that piece of paper. And basically, we're looking for you to authorize us to spend that money to pay those bills.
And these have been approved by the town, by the town.
The town meeting approves the budget items in those lines, but not the invoices per se. So. Blue Rock Earthworks Materials Transport for the Transfer Station, two thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars. Chem Search Equipment Repairs and Maintenance, one thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars. CMP, one thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. Uh, DJ's Municipal Supply, uh, those are supply, that's just a supply company, one thousand twenty dollars. Uh, Dennis K Burke, Gas and Oil, one thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars. The Boys and King, um, these are the, these are the people doing the work in North Monmouth. That's the, that's the uh. The consulting company.
Engineering.
Yeah, engineering company, I'm sorry, six thousand twenty dollars. Um, Fleet Truck and Refrigeration, these are repairs for the Public Works Department, one thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars on the trucks and stuff. Uh, GDI Services, that's our cleaning company, three thousand fifty dollars. La Rochelle Consulting for July and August, that's our Economic Development Consultant, two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Maine Heritage Weavers, three thousand fif- three thousand five hundred dollars, those are the blankets, right, Chris?
Yeah, that we're selling.
Selling for the, um. Maine Municipal Health Trust, fifty-two thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars. That, that's, that's three months worth of invoices. Something happened with our. Uh, coming out of our payroll, it wasn't being sent, so we had to catch up. Monmouth Museum, this is the, the TIF for Apple Fest, thousand dollars. Motorola Solutions, this is the equipment to replace for the new cruiser and to replace some on the, um, some of the old cruisers, eight thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars. Northeast Energy Apparatus, Emergency Apparatus, this is the, this is a repairs to the, um. And maintenance on the fire uh, trucks, three thousand three hundred and eight dollars. Uh, Paul's Design Project, he's the architect for the, uh, the middle school. Uh, project, twenty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Pine Tree Engineering, this is the, I think this is the final uh, payment on the sidewalk reconstruction, one thousand nine hundred dollars. RSU number two, four hundred and eighty-six thousand sixty dollars and forty-six cents. State of Maine Bureau Motor Vehicles, four thousand eight hundred and fifty-four, State of Maine IFW. Uh, five thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars. Bill Van Tynan, he's the man who reassessed the CMP uh, equipment, four thousand five hundred dollars.
I make a motion, we approve warrant number five for fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
Second.
The motion by Chris, second by Ken to approve warrant number five. All those in favor? I'm going to abstain on this one because I do have an invoice in that. Of Laura, smart man, I will abstain.
Uh, do, so are we getting our uh, fuel energy supplies from an, from the consortium of?
We went, um, the Maine Power Options Group that you've gone with the last couple of years. Um, their director quit and they weren't in a position to go up to bid or anything, so I went back and I joined with. Wayne, the Miranda Cook School District, um, Fayette and another town. Uh, we got pretty decent rates through that. Um, so we have Fabian Oil is doing our. Oil is doing our number two oil and propane and Dennis K Burke is going to continue to deliver diesel for the, um, Public Works.
I, I, I think we were with that group, that group previously.
You were. Mark Robinson reached out when he, when he heard the consortium wasn't going and he wanted to know if we wanted to join back in with that. They never left. They stayed as a, as a group. They asked us and I said, sure. He's the manager in Fayette, if you don't know that.
Did the new registration stickers come?
For the, uh.
I went.
For the cars?
Yeah, last week and I.
Yeah, it was because like on, what was it? Oh, it was because we were closed, so they had, they had so many people coming in that they, they were going through them at like twice the rate they ever did, so they weren't prepared for the. So it was, you know.
I went and Laurie's like, ooh, it's the last sticker.
Well, it's like we were closed, we, we opened and then the, and then the printer that we get for the registrations. It was tilting everything and the numbers were all coming off the side and BMW would never let us submit that. So then we had to tell people, it was like right when we could do motor vehicle registration again, it's like that printer died. It's like, this is a nightmare. What else can go wrong in here?
Yeah.
It's like Public Works.
Gosh. Oh, goodness. All right. I vote we, I make a motion, we adjourn.